Yes, this is one live right now.
Okay, in that case, there we go.
I'm ready.
Are you ready?
Yep, I am ready. So when you are ready, I don't even have to call out the order. I just have to say that we're going to have a public hearing on the proposed 2025 budget.
All right.
It's Monday, so in the similar fashion that I have done in the past, for those of you that have copies of the budget, you're welcome to follow along. If you have a question and I don't observe your hand, one of these people will alert it. And I'm going to focus on things of either some significance or a change. I'm trying to give you a little reasoning for what's happening there. So we will start with line item eight under government expenditures, general government expenditures. Line item eight happens to belong to our clerk treasurer. Her current year salary is $70,000 and in 19, or excuse me, 19, boy, is that thing. 2025, it will become $75,000. She does a great job. It's a competitive rate, given the other communities. And especially given the other communities are always looking for a good clerk treasurer. So we want to keep ours. So with that in mind, that's where we're going. Mileage, generally speaking, we don't really have a lot of people claiming mileage, but we do have one individual who takes care of our dam. He represents the bulk of our mileage as he goes down there weekly more than once to check, verify, manage the dam for us. So there's a slight increase in that. Our attorney, legal fees are going to remain at $15,000. Unfortunately, we have a number of different items that we rely upon our attorney for, one of which is nuisance issues. And that does chew up a chunk of cash as well as enforcement for our short-term rentals. So as a result, we're going to continue with that same amount. Dues, membership, that's line item 12, increased slightly, no, excuse me, year-to-date. Let me back up. Our budget is $2,000, it's going to remain the same. Those are memberships for Wisconsin Town Associations, Urban Towns, et cetera. So that's $2,000. We get good value out of Wisconsin Towns Association and the Urban Towns as a lobbying tool that benefits our community. Line 14, I'm sure that Amy could espouse on this for 10 or 15 minutes. We're going from an annual budget of $10,000 down to $3,000. And I'm guessing that's because we have a lot less elections.
A lot.
And there's no presidential election.
Not for the next four years.
Okay, so whoever's there is there. So the good news is they saved us a few bucks. Line 15, internet and website. We've had increases from our vendors on our website maintenance, as well as we increased the cost of internet to deal with some issues over our YouTube channel. So that represents the change. Postage, as you can see, year-to-date was $7,000. Going to finish the year at $7,300, and we're hoping it's only going to be $3,000 next year. I think I've mentioned this in the prior years. The bulk of our postage happens for absentee ballots. And you say, well, absentee ballots are great, but everybody that requests an absentee ballot, we have to put postage on it to mail it. We have to spend time to process it upfront. And we have to put postage on the ballot to return it to us. What we find frustrating, and you can help us there if you're listening, is if you're going to request an absentee ballot, know that we still, when you walk it back in the door, we've just wasted the postage. And that becomes a fairly significant line item. So if you want an absentee ballot, or there's really no wait. I think at the presidential election, I think I waited almost five minutes from the time I was in and out the door. So there's not a really great need unless you truly are gone. It costs us a lot of time and effort. You can help us in that regard. Okay, going down to line 21, assess their reval. As many of you, I'm sure, all know, we've completed our reval. And so now we're reverting back to just making an initial deposit in that account on an annual basis in anticipation of a future reval. And we did that for many, many years prior. So the reason for the amount and the decrease. Our auditor fees, line 22, we're going to go from $11,500 to $13,000. And that's basically just a charge that the auditor has kindly passed on to us. Tax collection fees, like everything else, the county does our tax collections for us. They were $4,000. They're telling us that in order to do that same job next year, they're going to need $5,500. So it's just a straight pass-through from one group to the other. Town hall grounds, line 27, basically same number. We do some things with property maintenance with Meisner and snow plowing. That's what makes up the bulk of those costs. And they've been, they're generally reasonably consistent. Town hall repair and maintenance, line item 30, budget's $10,000. Our year-to-date is 14, we'll end up at 15, and we're going with $12,000 for 2025. A lot of that has to do with water testing. We've had a constant problem with our well, even though we drilled a new one. Also, our furnace decides to be finicky. I think it's, what, 13 years old? It's just trying to act up. But we also increased it in anticipation. Next year, the town hall, I think, is 13 or 14 years old. And it needs a repaint. So we expect that to be done next spring. And that's a fairly involved process in that they'll power wash the building first and then two coats of paint after. Excuse me. Park grounds, line item 33, budget's 20 this year. We're going to take that to 25. That involves a lot of preparation for all the use that we have at the park. If we went back three, four, five years, we would have had perhaps one-third the games that we have currently. This year, there's 65 to 70 games played every summer there. And to keep the ball fields up and the grounds, we've enlisted an outside source to help. And we're also anticipating a little ground restoration after the restroom is completed. And if you haven't seen that, drive by. The footings, the walls are in. They're going to pour the floor for it this week. And then you'll start to see some actual above-ground construction. So that's, that's good news. Line item 35, business owners' insurance. That's rural insurance. Goes from $20,006 to $22,380. Again, that's basically, they're telling us what our costs are for the year, 7% increase. Going down to line item 40, Wisconsin retirement system. As we increase the clerk treasurer's salary, we also have to increase the retirement amount that the town contributes. And that applies to her as well as she does, we basically kind of match her contribution towards retirement. So that's the reason from 5 to 5,600. Same thing applies to FICA and Medicare. So you'll see the increase from 11 to 13 in that category. Next item, line item 42, plant commission. Current year, we had $6,900 in there. And in 2025, we're going to reduce that to zero. And where that bulk of that comes from is we are going to cancel our membership in the Bay Lake Regional Planning. They have been helpful to us, but we really have not been able to use their services enough in the last couple of years to justify the expense. I believe later on, I'll talk to that in terms of dollars. But what, in lieu of that, what we're going to do is park some money aside for the plant commission. So when we have to update the comprehensive plan, we'll just go out and hire a resource to do that work rather than spend $12,000 to $18,000 or $20,000 over the next two years in anticipation of needing that resource when we think it can be accomplished for a lot less. So we're making that change. Going all the way down to line 48, and I've talked about this earlier in the year. Our fire protection agreement was renewed. You'll see the numbers in the box to the far right. So our current budget was $394, and for 2025, it'll be $402,766. And that covers all the coverage that we get from them for inspections, you name it, fire permits and fire coverage. And that's a three-year contract we have with them. Not much change at all in the EMR coverage. Animal control, basically the same. Humane Society is the same. Biggest change that we'll see under Public Works, line item 59, is road maintenance and mowing. Taken a little different approach to this in the past. We've done what's called a single cut one year, and the following year, we'd do a double cut to try and keep the undergrowth, the brush, et cetera, down. But there's been, and maybe it was strictly due to all the rain we got this spring, but there were a lot of calls with respect to the fact that since we started mowing in July, the grass was well over your knee height, and it turned around and grew right back. So what we're going to do this year is we're going to do two cuts, single, single pass, but two cuts. Try and get that done in June and August so that you don't have the visibility issues and as many surprise deer jumping in your path. And we'll see how that goes. Road maintenance and repair, a slight decrease from 51 to 41. Sweeping, a little, a slight decrease. And road construction, we're going to maintain that at $400,000. We've done that for the past few years. We will continue to do that. And we're probably going to invest more in reconstruction than in paving overlays. Try and get a little better bang for our buck. Traffic and street signs, we've had the county do this. We try and catch these on our road tour where they need fixing, replacement, straightening, or whatever. If you, as a citizen, see one that's missing, bent, whatever, feel free to call the office and let us know so we can direct the county to go out and replace or repair those as need be. Line 64, snow removal. For all of those that have been hopeful about global warming, this is the year you really need to think about that because we're decreasing our snow removal budget, $10,000. And this is truly a, it's truly, there's a word for it. Let's just call it a, it's a good guess. We're hopeful that the weather will not bite us. But if it does, it does. In the meantime, we're going to try and take that down. Hopefully, Mother Nature follows us. Tree trimming, this continues at the same rate, $25,000. They have, our vendor who does this for us has a number of projects yet to be completed this year, which they will do. But the infamous ash trees, there's just no keeping up with them. There's numerous trees that need to be taken down. And I've taken the position that if they're close to the road, we hope they blow into the owner's property. It may not happen. But we're trying to stay on top of the ones that are really an issue. And unfortunately, there's a lot. Going over to Culture, Recreation and Education, line item 74, Clark Lake Dam. We're increased the budget there. We are in the process of doing some repair and renovation to the dam, which is the result of the increase. And fix some problems where erosion has occurred on the concrete. Town park fuel expense, line item 79. We're making a change there, and hopefully that'll bring about a $1,000 decrease in the amount of fuel expense that we've had, which I think will be beneficial and will not bother us. Town parks, really nothing else changes down there until you get down to cable operations expenses, line item 84. And this is budgeted at $44,700 in the current year and $82,700 in the future year. And this goes to the current project to put cameras up into the room. So the cameras are fixed and operational rather than have them up on tripods, et cetera. And also to enhance the final phase of the audio, which is the replacement of these microphones that the town board is using. All right. Flipping the page here, going to Capitol Outlay, line item 96. Excuse me, line 96, Capitol Outlay. Capitol Park Recreation, that's a decrease from 33 to 15. We are, we do set money aside, however, and that $15,000 is represented in some enhancements to the concession stand, as well as eventual replacement of our truck, which I think is a bristling new 97?
No.
96?
93, 94.
Oh, it's that new. I'm sorry, maybe we should, all right. So it's, eventually the wheels will fall off. In the meantime, we'll accumulate funds to replace it. Line item 99, this is an EMR radio upgrade. You may have read some of this in the different newspaper articles or heard about it. Essentially what it is, is that the county has to switch from, to a digital, has to switch to a digital radio system so that the deputies, the EMRs, first responders, you name it, are available, are able to get the radio signals and communicate back. And there's a variety of dead zones throughout the county, much similar to what we all experience with cell, cell coverage. So they're making an investment in that. We're not positive exactly how it affects us. There's some grants available. We're not sure if, obviously, we could get them. We're also not sure if the county's going to assess on a county basis for this or exactly how it's going to be handled. But it's a significant chunk of cash. Do you remember the total, Trent?
We figured it would be around $100,000 to $120,000 to replace all the radios.
To do that for our EMRs?
Yeah.
So we're going to just take a swing at it and start to put some money aside, knowing that this is going to take a couple of years for them to implement. They have to build cell towers, new communication towers. So we're going to just set some money aside to be prepared in the event they come back to us and said, you've got to do this. And with 21 EMRs needing radios, pagers, et cetera, it's a chunk of cash. Also, line item 100, webcams town, as part of the contract with AT&amp;T, they are going to provide us with fiber drops at all of our town park locations, meaning Clark Lake Dam, Clark Lake Beach, the town park, Whitefish Bay, et cetera. We're going to make a stab at putting cameras at at least a couple of those locations. Clark Lake Dam being one of them and our town property here, town park. So we're setting aside some money to do that. We'll see how that goes. And we may address the other sites over the years. Chairman?
Good question.
Yes?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just in the future, what you may want to take a look at, especially if you're going to look at cameras at parks like Whitefish, like the Whitefish Bay Dock, that sort of thing. It's like that might be opportunities for destination or county grants, since that's something, obviously, that can facilitate tourism.
Yep.
I know some other communities are looking at that as well. So that might be an opportunity to, to figure out budget costs.
We could, we're always happy to use someone else's money. Or donations, Derek.
Especially if you like broadcast or allow to have the feed broadcast. I mean, numerous people will be able to use it for like, you know, like, for example, some of the TV stations, if they want to see a, see like a scenic view or something.
See if there's room on the beach to come put your towel down. All right, we'll chase after that. Thanks. Capitol Town, what is this? Town Hall Grounds Communication. I'm drawing a blank for the moment. Budget, 45, $2,000. Oh, that's because we have set aside everything that we need for the communications and as well as replenishment of our grounds fund, correct? Sounds good. Okay. Under total expenditure, line 103, budget for '24 was $1,666,441. Projected budget for '25 is $1,536,856, or a decrease of $130,000. From that, you have to add in our debt service, which we can put on the tax bill. And so that brings us to total expenditures with debt at $1,688,133 in line 107. And the total budget for 2025 at $1,558,548. Then we go down to revenues. Not a lot of stuff changes here because it pretty much comes to us in one form or another throughout the year. The biggest single thing that's changed in the last year was line item 115, which is shared revenues from the state. You'll note there that there was a significant increase from the prior years, and we anticipate getting that money again in 2025. Line 119, Door County Tourism Board, Board Zone, excuse me, Destination Door County reimbursement. We pay the Destination Door County, Door County Tourism Zone, excuse me. We pay them to work through our STRs for the licensing permits, funding, et cetera. They bill us $27,000. And then under an arrangement with Destination Door County, they, I want to say rebate, or give us back those funds out of the money they collect from the room tax. We would have to pay that and get no value out of it. But what we did was we decided to borrow money to pay for the tennis court pickleball upgrade. And so that payment basically comes back to us through Destination Door County's rebate for the tourism zone dollars. So instead of it being a waste, we've actually been able to capture it and turn it into a positive. Line item 123, licensed liquor, a little decrease there. Interesting footnote from 5,200 to 4,900 is the state no longer requires the wineries to come through us for a liquor license. So they handle that directly. Dropping down to line item 135, fieldwork reimbursement. This money comes directly from the Sebastopol School District, the $10,000. They reimburse us to some degree for the use of the fields, maintenance of the fields, and the chemicals, et cetera, that occur over there. I think we just signed a new contract with them last year. So that's good through '26. All right. Going to the next one, down to interest, line 150, Associated Bank, Bay Lake. We've been very fortunate with the rate increases that happened to get a significant amount of funds back through our interest. Those rates have already started to decrease. We anticipate further decreases throughout the year. So there's some trade-off there. We're going to lose a little. But on the flip side, as those interest rates come down, we have to borrow money in 2025 to pay for the broadband project as it's undergoing. So we'll be able to take advantage of a lower interest rate as we anticipated. So it'll be a little side benefit there. So total revenues, subtotal revenues were $710,000 that we get from all of these other sources. So going underneath taxes, the tax levy, the maximum amount that we can levy is a maximum of 2% or it's based on the percent of new home growth, construction in the town. But in our case, we're limited by the 2%. So we go from $652,124 to the new limit of $656,144 for 2025. As you scroll down, the total levy then, excuse me, line 156, levy for general obligation debt. This is the money I just talked about that we had borrowed for the tennis pickleball courts, the $21,692. That's added to the $656. So the total levy then becomes $677,836. So the revenues, the $710 plus and the tax levy come up to $1,388,578. In order to make that budget balance against revenues, we take from our cash reserves $169,970. And that balances the budget for us. So the total expenditures and debt all come out equal. So the total in the bottom line continues to be that $130,000, $130,000 less than it was in 2024. And if you flip the page to the page titled Levy and Mill Rate History, when you do the calculations on our assessed valuation, the amount needed, and you do it, the division, what you end up with is a tax levy of approximately 51 cents per thousand of assessed valuation. In 2024, that number was just a hair under 90 cents per thousand. So you see it there, 0.89719, et cetera, et cetera, versus the current year at .50712. So even though we had a significant change in everyone's valuation, we fully expected the mill rate to decrease. I think there is, Laddie, do you have that sheet on the tax post-reval?
Amy did not get it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you had it. Well, I put together a sheet. I'll just go through it anyhow. I put together a sheet just to compare your taxes year over year. And I took a home valued at $250,000. And your taxes in 2024, prior to the reval, would have been $225. If your tax value stayed the same at $250 this year, it would have been $99 less, or $126. So then I took that same property, $250,000, and I increased its value by 50%. So it now became $375,000. And your tax bill would have been $190, or $35 less than it was in the current year. I took another example where I increased that $250,000 home 75%, bringing the home value to $437,000. That would have taken your tax to $226, which would have been a $1 increase over the current year. And if you wanted to jump it 100% to a half-million-dollar home, in other words, you doubled your property, you'd end up at $253 versus the $225 you started with, or an increase of $28. So I just wanted to make mention of the fact, I think we do a good job of managing your money. I know a lot of people were very concerned about the reval. It was a long time in between that created some of the anxiety, I'm sure. But I think the majority of us can feel pretty comfortable that the rate increase, and I can't speak to the county or the school district, but from a town's perspective, I think it's very well-managed and very minimal change, if any, depending on the individual. So that kind of, you have some figures here if you want to, if you're interested. It just tells you what we anticipate having in our different funds that we have over the course of the year and where those get depleted. But that encompasses everything as far as the information on the budget. If somebody's got a question or two that I've missed or something, please let me know now. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now that we kind of have a line of sight on the actual contract and timing with AT&amp;T, I noticed there really isn't an expenditure plan for 2025. Can you just kind of highlight, looking at what you think the budget funding, you know, might be? And any bonding that the town may do to cover it some time?
That's a good question. Thank you. Okay. What our plan is, is that actually we have enough money in our fund through the ARPA dollars. And as a result of our town receiving the grant award, significantly reduced our payout. So we are anticipating that we should be able to cover that first payment, which will be due January of 2025, out of existing cash that we have on hand. Any other payments that are due are driven by the workflow of AT&amp;T. So depending on, I think the next, I'm going off the top of my head here, but I think the next gating element is a 25% completion rate in the town, at which time they will bill us another component. Frankly, I'd be stunned if they get that far in '25. If they have to... If they have to, our plan is to go back to the land, the group out of the state of Wisconsin, where we borrowed money for the pickleball tennis courts, and borrow money from them, and depending on how fast the interest rates decline, we will determine whether we take a short-term or longer-term loan from them to fund it. But I'm hopeful that, basically, we got twenty-five covered, so, which I think would be good news. Good enough? Anything else from anyone else? Hearing nothing? We will close the public hearing.